...twelve, two thousand seventeen by the Secretary, CSB Press, The Independent, Two River Times, Township Clerk, and has been posted in the meeting room and in the entrance hall and town hall, all pursuant to Section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could just stand for a moment of silence to honor the military who have been wounded or killed in action, and our police and our first responders for all they do to keep us safe. And we haven't been in session since the Marine from Coltsneck in Monmouth County was killed, Dander Baltieri, so if we can have a special intention for him as well, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Rokol, please. Mr. Acterson, Mayor Bon Tembo.
Here.
Mrs. Demosso.
Here.
Mr. Fasiano.
Here.
Mr. Corbido. Mr. King.
Here.
Mrs. Lamouton.
Here.
Mr. Reyna.
Here.
Mr. Lille.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
Dr. Wass. Okay, thank you. At this time, we need a motion to approve the professional, basically, our planning board planner. We have, the township committee has hired the foreman of Leon Abakian and Jennifer Bean specifically, so I need a motion to adopt the resolution to hire Jen Back.
Motion.
Second.
Need Rokol, all in favor. Rokol? Mayor Bon Tembo.
Yes.
Mr. Fasiano.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mrs. Lamouton.
Yes.
Mr. Reyna.
Yes.
Mr. Foster.
Yes.
Do you want to sit, Mr. Foster, please? For, Mr. Corbido? Sure. Okay. Mrs. Demosso? Yes. Thank you, guys, thank you. Welcome back.
Thanks.
Now that you're here. Okay, at this time, we have the Capitol view of the project for Homedale Board of Education. Gentlemen?
Hi, Dr. Wass.
You need to use their email. Do you have any? Oh, we have one right here, faster. Hold on.
the plan for the Homedale twenty twenty initiative, a referendum to take place on September twenty sixth here in Homedale Township.
If you could just state the name for the record to them, she transcribes, she knows who it is.
Robert McGarry, I'm the Superintendent of Schools, Homedale Township Schools.
Okay, and for the record, this is just a courtesy for the planning board and for its members and for the members in the audience that are here.
They've received DOE.
You've received the DOE of programs already, so this is a courtesy, we appreciate your comment.
Correct. So, you know, one thing I really value about Homedale Township is that if there were a daily cloud of words that was created based upon all of the words that are said throughout the day in Homedale Township, I think the word "school" would be the largest of the words that would appear in that cloud. Having gone to several township committee meetings over the past year and in several different community events over the time I've been superintendent now, one of the things people always talk about is how important schools are to this community. And there's an interesting parity between, I believe, what you see happening with the Bellworks property and our school district. Bell Labs, which grew up around the same time as the former SATS, well, former Homedale Intermediate School now known as SATS Middle School, but those two facilities really sort of grew up together. And what we see happening at Bell Labs and Bellworks in terms of the change of the kinds of jobs people are taking on there and the kind of industry that's being developed there, and you look at sort of where our schools are right now, our schools are not keeping up to date with the kinds of jobs and the kind of work environment that our children are going to encounter when they find their way into the world. So we're at a point where a school that was built in nineteen sixty-eight or opened its doors in nineteen sixty-eight is in great need of updating, and at this time, we have a real great opportunity to do some updating there and at the Homedale High School, but also take care of some infrastructure improvements throughout the district and its four schools and also on the property that is shared by Homedale High School and SATS Middle School. So I'm going to turn things over with that introduction to our architect, Scott Mahalik, to sort of lead you through our visual.
One moment.
That was a test.
I appreciate the assist. I'm not sure we're going to wind up on the floor. As Dr. McGarry said, my name is Scott Mahalik, SSBR Tech. I know we were here in June or July and had walked through preliminarily the plan. I offer to you, if you'd like me to do another walk through, if you have questions based on what we had, I'm fine to do either.
Does anybody in the walk through?
So, if there were any questions that were submitted, as we did again last time.
Well, last time, you really only had one set of plans. But we only, we only had one set. So subsequently, all the sets have been submitted. So just, if you could, just for the record, just quickly, if you have to, just quickly go through and say the quick changes of each, of each summer, record at this time.
Not a problem at all. I have one work each school. The first four here is Village School. The project that was sent before you involves paving the existing rock lot that's on the corner of Homedale Hill Town and the Campbell Road with the rock lot that was just put in a few years ago. We're looking to pave that and then just do some repairs in the back to the play pavilion structures. We'll actually get a few more parking stalls out of that lot by beginning to paving it and formalizing that. At Indian Hill, what you see on the bottom is, I guess, the west of the school right now, Homedale Road is off on the left here. The plan is to extend the bus pickup drop-off area and add additional parking. Right now, there is, there's no parking on Homedale Road in the site. It does get very, very tight at times of pickup, drop-off, and school events. So we're going to be extending that parking lot, stopping short of the playing field and not be interrupting, because I believe folks park back here right now anyway.
They go play barge.
At the high school and SATS complex, this board here is kind of an amalgamation of a few of the projects that you have before you. The complex is in the middle in gray, Crawford's Corner is down along the bottom, the field up at the top of the page, and Crawford Beyond. The big initiative here is on the corner of SATS to create a new main entrance and some additional science labs here. That will help give the school a visual presence right now. If you're familiar with the school, the main entrance is, looks like a back door. So it'll be creating a main entrance and identity for the school. Just behind that, we have a small little addition here, which is effectively a corridor length. Right now, everyone in SATS going from the front to the back has to pass through that very skinny corridor, which is about as skinny as it looks on the plan here. This will help the circulation within as well as to close off the courtyard and to provide a more secure entrance to the gym for after-hours. Along the back, we have a small addition, there's currently a small parking lot here that we'd be taking a piece of that and putting in an additional PE station and some changing rooms that are really going to help support the PE program as well as the athletic component up in the back. Part of what we have in this corner are some exterior accessible toilet rooms that are not accessible from the school, so that the district can open those up when there are events on the site and have to have a security issue with what's going on in the school. The parking, the circulation, everything else effectively stays the same. And the last piece which takes place, you'll still see those additions here, but up in the back, is really a total redo on the field complex, the four main fields that sit behind the school. The middle two, which are getting significant work, the two on either end, which are just getting some minor regrading and some siding, part of what we'll be doing is creating a barrier-free path so that all fields are accessible to wheelchair-bound persons. We are moving the tennis court. We, the board has decided to stop fighting the battle of the sinking tennis courts and relocate them up to higher ground and return the former tennis court areas to natural grass, which they can use when it's not left for PE practice. But at the main field, we have some modifications to the grandstands to make those ADA accessible, redoing of the field and turf, and which are in the track, as well as replacing the light poles, which are, I believe, from nineteen seventy. Here, we're not working for the Homedale School District in nineteen seventy, I can't tell you the exact date of that. Those are effectively the seven projects that were sent before you. There were five others as well that were sent to the Department of Education. Those are all dealing with infrastructure and interior projects, and that's why those weren't set here, they don't have any exterior. About five minutes time.
Does we have any questions?
There were just a couple comments. I understand it's just concept plans, but what you do is your final plan. Most of these will trigger the major development pressure, so you're going to have to address homeowners management.
Yes.
And the torque buffers for the Indian, not the Indian Hill site, the SATS hole over there. Also, on the Indian Hill site, you may want to include a fence, like a square fence or, you know, some type of, and some landscaping, because you're right next to the park there, you want to be able to keep the kids from running into the travel lane.
That's certainly something. I appreciate your commentary. These are very preliminary. These are certainly not what you were used to see, and that's a function of how the school district is funded and how that works. Certainly something that we can take into consideration. Absolutely.
Anybody else?
If you have any recommendations, just send out.
I was discussing Bonnie, so she. Should I just send a cover note to the township committee? Okay. And now we had no questions, and we wish them well. Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Chair, how are you? While they're getting ready to get set up, there was an item that Bonnie and I felt needed to come back before you, just administratively, before we made any kind of decisions on behalf of the board. This is in the reserve, right?
Yes.
So Toll Brothers in the reserve, as part of the subdivision, there were trees that have been identified to be preserved on the lots, and now that they're selling the lots, we're getting residents coming in asking to remove the trees that were identified to be preserved when they came in for the subdivision. We really don't have any.
It's five trees. And they're not in easements, they're not protected. Once the homeowner takes title to it, per ordinance is they could remove them if they choose, now they just want to do them ahead of time. So we're requesting approval to remove the lot.
Well, we, I did, this did come to my attention. I asked Mike Nicholas to come as the environmental chair, because I spoke to him, I got his input, and the environmental commission's input is that if we can save a tree, we save a tree. So if the homeowner comes in and wants to cut them down, then the homeowner can cut them down.
So we should wait until the homeowner takes over the lot?
Certainly, if they want to make some deal in this payment where they cut them down afterwards, you know, as part of the, you know, sale, it's not our business, but to have them cut down ahead of time, that is the advice from the environmental commission. Mike had said he would try to be here, I guess he's running a little bit late. When he comes, I'll let him speak for himself.
Ready for us?
Yes, continue public hearing. Item number three, Somerset Homedale Development, one urban renewal LP, amended site plan, approval, signage approval, required to install certain signs throughout the exterior of the property at one oh one Crawford's Corner Road, plot eleven, lasts thirty-eight point oh three, thirty-eight point oh four, thirty-eight point oh five, thirty-eight point oh six, and thirty-eight point oh seven. Mr. Bruno?
Good evening, Chair, first, and members of the board. This is a continuation from your June thirt, June twentieth meeting, when the application was presented for the weight finding signs for the Bellworks project. We presented the proposal at that meeting, and the board had several comments, several concerns with certain signs. And we carried the application to today's date, gave us time to address those comments as well as to meet with your TRC last week, revise the plans which have been submitted. I have Katie Osborne, who's assigned, so go through the details, but let me just summarize exactly what we've changed from the last hearing. There was a clear consensus that the sign along Roberts Road should be eliminated. The applicant has eliminated that sign as requested. There was also a consensus that perhaps the four digital signs, directional signs that would service those people coming in off of Roberts Road along the Ring Road, those be eliminated, because you didn't want to encourage anybody coming in from Roberts Road, and they do. You want them to drive around it for a couple hours before they find them.
And they never do that again.
So we've put in a gas station for those folks, but we're going to.
All right.
We've removed those signs also.
Or a plug. People around here have electric cars.
True. And then the tower signs, colored tower signs, there was a little bit of a reaction, negative reaction to those, those twelve-foot colored towers. So they've been eliminated, and we've reduced the number of signs to the extent it makes sense. We've also modified the size and the height, taking into account the request to see if we can make those a little bit smaller, a little bit lower, and we've made some modest changes to those where it's possible. So we've tried to address all of your concerns. I'll let Katie speak a little bit about the details of those. Pretty straightforward, but let's talk about how we were able to do that, what they now look like, the signs.
Sure.
And you were previously sworn, correct?
Yes, yes. So just as a reminder, just for the team, just say, hold on. Katie Osborne, Principal of the ED.
Yeah, so just to recap, we've removed the digital directory signs down here. We've also consolidated directional signs along the Crawford's Corner Road as well as within the keyhole itself, to reduce the overall number of directional signs. Also, we have a before and after of the sign.
And this is a exhibit at your office.
Yes, yes, and you all have copies of this.
We're up to.
So overall, as you can see in the previous set.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
A one, I think, tell what you want.
Oh, just A two?
Just do A two.
A two with today's date?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So just to recap, this was a previous submission. As you can see, the signs' sizes were all of a different shape and proportion. What we've done now is taken all and made them all consistent scale and proportion. We've reduced all of these three sign types to a consistent sign height, reduced non-necessary locations of the sign type, and utilized the entirety of the sign so that it is fully utilized in terms of its information and content. We've also added a base, concrete base, for security of the sign during maintenance, snowplows, grass, lawn mowers, etc.
Mike, just for the record, we have a small version.
Yes.
Is page one the old and page two is the new?
Correct, yes, correct. Okay. So, yeah, so as you can see, we've essentially redesigned the family to make it consistent proportion and scale throughout the entire program. We also wanted to just reconfirm that any of the digital content will be static throughout its display. There will be no rotation of information, flashing, movies, nothing like that. It is simply for displayed information, and any content will be reset during off-hours as to not disrupt traffic. And we've sized the typography on the directional signs according to state traffic controlling regulations. We've made it the most minimal size possible in order to address the speed around the keyhole.
So previously, the sign height had the concrete in the grass or in the ground?
Correct.
And now you're raising it to concrete?
We've raised it and made it consistent throughout. So actually, the only one that had concrete base within it above the ground was side ID. We've now made it consistent throughout, and so that, so as you can see, they're all the same. Just for the board's information, the concrete base and the footing is not included in the sign area per ordinance definition.
And the, I know we had this issue before with other topics about the amount of light or the candlelight, the luminance that comes off the signs, they're complying with our ordinance.
The, well, we'd have to get the lighting information, obviously. The ones that are in the parking lots and the ones that are the directional ground mounted, they're not really illuminated, so.
Those are not, you know.
Those are not illuminated.
The digital ones, we've, you know, we have to get their stuff.
And we can submit that information once the final digital product is selected.
So what you're saying to me is that on the second, so on these signs, the first one there, you should only consider that it's ten foot tall as opposed to eleven, because it's a one-to-base.
Correct.
And you've had a chance to review the board's engineer review letter of July twenty-eighth and the comments in that letter?
Yes.
And the applicant's agreeable complying with those comments?
Yes.
Is there anything in your letter, Bonnie, that you'd like us to address on the record, or is that statement satisfactory?
No, most of them are supplemental information, utilities, you know. If the signs conform, they have to provide that information anyway, so.
Well, I think you can see the applicant made an effort to try to address the comments that we heard, and I think the comments were effective. I think the sign package now is even better than it was originally, and we've eliminated quite a number of signs, particularly the ones that were posed up to the board members, and so I would ask the board to approve this this evening.
Just so I'm reading this correctly, the ground-mounted side ID sign is actually a foot tall, two foot taller, technically three foot taller, right? This is nine foot, including the base, and this is ten foot, not including the base.
Which nine plus one?
It's ten foot.
Ten foot, including the base, and now it's eleven feet, including the base, but it's narrower. It was eight feet wide, now it's six eight.
Okay, so we went up a foot and changed the area.
Right, and I don't think that was one of the ones you had a concern with.
No, we didn't.
That's undersized.
Right, right, but that's, I just wanted to.
But they did eliminate that sign from the Roberts Road, and so now there's just the signs on Crawford's Corner and on the Middle Town Road.
No.
Yes.
And do you still have all the parking signs on the poles?
We do.
Yes.
But they got rid of those huge towers.
All colored, basically.
Correct, yeah.
Well, we got rid of the twelve-foot.
Yeah.
Sorry, sign that hated lights.
So just, not to, you know, be contrary, there was, it looked like there was a yellow parking sign or green or purple, whatever the colors are, on every single light pole. Is that still the way it is?
It's, it's not every single light pole, it's replacing in kind, which signs are out there now. So I believe it's every other light pole, but it's only a replacement in kind, so there's more additional signs than what exists.
Okay, because on page nineteen of the exhibit you gave us last time, which is the whole big package of, it's dated five nineteen twenty seventeen, so every pole has a new yellow sign on it, so that's why it is.
Yeah, we have, we've reevaluated that.
Like a, and only replace.
Only replace.
Thank you.
Is that, that's in the revised plans or what?
So you have that. Do you know what the?
There are a hundred five of the poles, they're on the parking lot, but there's one sign on each side, so it's technically fifty, so you get two hundred and ten.
And how many poles are there?
Oh.
A lot more than that. I would say probably five hundred poles, maybe, four hundred something poles.
Really?
Yes. It's hard to tell on a plan of the scale, because it doesn't do justice to how big the site really is. Mike went in and drove around it the other day, and I was there yesterday. This, oh, just this morning, that was on a birthday pole. She happens to have a decision fixed in there. Anyway.
One thing, one thing at a time.
That was for you. Do you have any decision needs to be fixed that you had?
Where?
In the building. Anyway, so I went driving around and I, you know, tried to imagine the signs, so I appreciate that you've cut them down significantly. There was, how many the last time, directional signs, and how many are there now, just for the record?
Um.
It was like forty-some odd.
Yeah, they're, they're now down to forty-one of the directional signs.
But it was like forty-two or something.
Forty-four.
Forty-four, forty, it's now to thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine? Okay, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Forty-three. I will say, though, in fairness to the applicant, you do have a lot of decision points as you're going around that egg.
I know.
So it seems exorbitant, but really, once it gets laid out, and it's such a big site, I really do think it's necessary, because otherwise you're going to wind up with a lot of accidents over there.
I will also say that based on the curve of that keyhole, you can't see the next sign at the decision point, because you're turning the curve. So you're not going to, it's not like you're going down a long road, you're going to see all these signs together.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
What do we call those twelve-foot signs that were located?
They were the parking lot IDs.
Parking lot IDs.
They, they made their polls.
Would you call it?
Made their polls.
And now it doesn't look so much like an airport. We're just cooking with gas, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing is that the location, the ones on the keyhole coming in from Crawford's Corner Road were moved closer to the Ring Road, so they're away from the, well, there's no new residents there yet, but what eventually will be the new residents from that phase of the multifamily project. Be it restricted? Yes.
Any other questions?
Those, those are the directional ones, push one further.
Yeah, they were shown on the line of plans.
The directional ones or the parking directory?
These are the digital ones. The ones with the yellow banner on the top.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So those were moved closer to Crawford's?
Correct, closer to the Ring Road.
Closer to the building.
Yeah.
Away from the house.
Okay. All right. Any additional, and now we have anything else? So I need a motion to approve the. Sorry. Oh, yeah, that was the pop sign, my apologies. Questions, comments? Okay, does anybody in the public like to be heard on this application?
Jenny, hello, eighteen, I would drive, I'm just wondering, because I wasn't following originally, the digital signs, there's going to be none on the exterior now, or there's certain spots?
There are no, there are no digital signs on the exterior of the site.
It's only when you go into the.
It's only when you approach from Middle Town Road and Crawford's Corner Road.
And go in?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else standing up, I'll vote for the motion. Now, can I have a motion to approve the sign packages presented?
Motion.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Right, and Rob. Rokol, please? Mayor Bon Tembo?
Yes.
Mr. Fasiano?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamouton?
Yes.
Mr. Reyna?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mrs. Demosso?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
You need those, right, Bonnie?
We need those, yeah. Yeah, I wrote them.
I told this to somebody else, that's why they were.
These are the digital ones. The digital ones. The ones with the yellow banner on the top.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So those were moved closer to Crawford's?
Correct, closer to the Ring Road.
Closer to the Ring Road.
Closer to the building.
Closer to the building.
Okay.
Away from the house.
Okay. Any additional, no, but has anything else? So I need a motion to approve the... Sorry? Right? Oh, yeah, that was the pump sign, my apologies. Questions first, any comments? Okay. Does anybody in the public like to be heard on this application?
Jenny Nello, 18 Live Drive, I'm just wondering, because I was following originally, the digital signs, there's gonna be none on the exterior now or there's certain spots?
There are no, there are no digital signs on the exterior of the site.
It's only when you go into the...
It's only when you approach from Middle Town Road and Crawford's Corner Road.
And go in?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else seeing that? I'll close the publication. Now, can I have a motion to approve the sign package as presented? I'm sorry, you made the motion? Right. And Rob? Local, please.
Mayor Pottenthal?
Yes.
Mr. Fasiano?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamouton?
Yes.
Mr. Reyna?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMossel?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Do you need those, hey Bonnie? I'm gonna go to item four. Toll, Homedale LLC Regency, moralizing resolution for extension of the period of protection to final age of site plan, number 2014-2, approval for a one-year period from August 12 until of 2017, so August 12 and 2018. We already emailed the resolution. Does anybody have any question about it? Mr. Bruno, you were okay with it?
I was.
Need a motion to adopt the resolution? Sam? Okay. You second?
Second.
Mayor Pottenthal?
Yes.
Mr. Fasiano?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamouton?
Yes.
Mr. Reyna?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMossel?
Yes.
Thank you.
This time we're going to item five, which is Meridian Quality Care. I'm gonna step down and step out for a moment. Perceived conflict of interest? Sorry.
I'm going to step out.
I will be back because that's not for me.
Item number five, Meridian Quality Care, amended site plan number 2017-3, subdivision number 652, amended preliminary phases one and two, final phase 21, block 50.30, lot 63.02, 10300 Commons Way, assisted living facility, skilled nursing. A resolution circulated...
Circulated professionals, they've had comments, they were made, it was also circulated to the applicant's council. They were, they had no comments other than, are you here? Okay, so I'll let it explain. There is one request that the applicant's making now, my summary of it is that they would like to proceed with the subdivision perfection independently of the site plan's perfection or the final one anyway, so they can speed up subdivision, both systems and speeding up their financing requirements. I don't know if I misstate that, but you can go into more detail so we can explain what you're trying to do. Currently, just for the board's knowledge, there's one resolution they're trying to make. They asked for three items, preliminary and final site plan, phase one, preliminary only for phase two, and also the financial subdivision, as we call it, to separate the nursing home and the assisted living facility, two lots, which is preventing power, power organs. It's all in one resolution, so at the moment, everything has to be complied with in order to proceed with any one of those aspects of the...
Phil, I'm John Sardo from Girdan, and she's about Meridian Quality Care. But that's accurate. The only thing I'd add is that we're looking to, this was a financial subdivision and to the extent there was any variances needed, the ordinance provides you don't need to comply technically or put on proofs to get those variances. So this was always part of the idea that this was for financing and what we're looking to do is, what Meridian's looking to do is to get the subdivision perfected immediately if possible, provide the flat's conform and our proof so that we can get the financing and then go through the compliance process, get permits, and construct phase one, which we just got final on. And that's what, I don't think it was stated at the time of the applicant, you know, the hearing, and that's what we're trying to do by now.
The hearing itself had no request, it was not even addressed whether they could proceed independently, so the resolution was drafted, so they're all together. Our professionals are aware of the problem. The request makes sense from one perspective, but there's also so many things that are tied together, and Bonnie, Jen could describe it better, as to, we probably have to carve out a whole set of things to make the subdivision, it will be perfected at a different pace. So I'll let, because you guys...
Yeah, I mean, it's not just recording the flat. There are certain conditions that if it was just a standalone subdivision, would have to be complied with. You'd have to get county planning board approval for the subdivision. You'd have to do all of the easements associated, like conservation easements are part of the subdivision, the monument bonding would be, you know, and things like that. So that would all have to be separated out. And usually with the financial subdivisions, it was always, they've always been treated as part of, you know, combined site plan and subdivision. You know, for example, the Bellworks was, you know, essentially a financial subdivision because it created all these different parcels. The four lots originally, not the, you know...
But it went alongside the site plan for the building.
So, you know, it's not just a straight pull the subdivision apart.
I think the concern is, is that it's taken a really long time to get back to this point, and if you, if you allow the subdivision to go forward without the site plan, you could in, in fact, have a landlocked piece of property that works when you look at the site plan, but let's say this doesn't move forward, now you're gonna have two lots, one of which is landlocked, and it's concerning because the way that the application was presented, it was, you know, we didn't take exception to the location of the lot line because of how the site plan laid itself out. So I have concerns, I understand the rationale from the financing standpoint, but I have concerns from a technical standpoint on how to separate the two when they were always together at times.
And it would, from my perspective, essentially would require the resolution to be amended and with the input of our professionals, we'd have to have a whole nother set of new conditions, for lack of a better term, that would apply only to the subdivision but not to, you know, independent. So at the moment, the resolution you have does not allow us to simply just grant the request. It would have to be amended after further review, but I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do it, obviously. It can be done tonight, put it that way.
If it's not allowed, would it hamper the financing that greatly?
I'm not directly involved, but I understand it would push back the timelines and that's what we're trying to accomplish here by perfecting the subdivision first. Would be ultimately to have shoveled the ground sooner.
I mean, the applicant could, as they're known through resolution compliance, they could, you know, at some point in the future, come back and seek amendment to subdivision part of it and ask for that to carve out. I'm not saying it'll be granted, but it'd be dealt with separately at that time, you know, if you come under time issues. We didn't have a, no one has had a chance, the only problem is to consider the separation, that's the only...
Could that be done since administratively and not on a, on a re-known as hearing because the substance is ultimately the same?
If you're amended, it probably has to be a re-known as hearing. It would, I don't know, either request, but just by what you're saying, I would imagine that would be re-known as, could it be amended? At that point, it'd be amended application.
We can't without a hearing. We can't, what a hearing raises, we can't carve anything out. It has to be a formal application.
Well, no, I think it could be carved out, not tonight, but our professionals can carve out all the...
But it's...
...some of it. Can't be done tonight, but it can be carved out. Now, I'm not saying body, maybe, or Jan, maybe, is it possible, as they're doing resolution compliance, you've checked all the things necessary for the subdivision and it would allow that map to be filed prior to the, I mean, that's hypothetical, maybe that's what you're getting at, John, that maybe...
Yeah, I don't know what's the best procedure to accomplish that, but whatever that is, we'd like to take that route.
Right. So have to re-known as, do all that process.
Sure, and I don't think anything of substance with the actual approvals changing, it's just the time and the conditions that need to be complied.
I would have to go back and check the requirements that nobody's trying to grab right now because I'm not sure that a standalone subdivision like this would qualify under the, you know, under the financial subdivision section without the site plan. So bodies try to pull that up because it's...
I hope it's a little sloppy.
If it was just a straight minor subdivision, it would require a lot of labor.
Yeah, you have all the things that are worked that were waived, because they don't apply, so they weren't waived, they're just in apply.
Yeah, right. So I have to, have to check the language to see whether or not it would even qualify as a financial subdivision if it's separate and apart from the site plan.
Well, my two senses, we shouldn't be answering that tonight because I don't think our professionals have a good chance to really sit down and review everything. So I would recommend, well, I'll take your advice, but if you want to postpone this, fine, we can just come back at another meeting, but law wouldn't have the chance to just think about it. If not, I would recommend we vote on the resolution as is and then, you know, come back. You have to, either way, you're coming back, either for amended or administrative if it's even permitted.
Sure, and I guess I'll request then that the resolution as is would be adopted this evening and, you know, we can have further discussion to make the application as appropriate after the discussions.
I think that's the best way, is what you guys bring.
So...
Any other comments on the resolution?
And anyone motion, motion to approve the resolution as written?
Yeah. Second?
Second.
I'm second.
Bob and Tom? Mr. Fasiano?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Lamouton?
Yes.
Mr. Reyna?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Unfortunately.
So, can I, can you close the meeting?
Great, well, I was hoping Mike would get here so he could put it on the record himself about the environmental commission.
This is what we should have done.
What? What should we do? Yeah. Smart pants. That went well, I assume?
That's right.
All right, so plan is reported.
Other than the tree issue, I have nothing to report.
Engineer?
I have nothing to report on the trees.
Okay. So that is, you know, so...